Good evening and welcome to the August 18th, 2014 joint work session of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners and Gaston Board of Education. My name is Tracy Philbeck, I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner for the Dallas Township. For our audience, I'd like to present to you your Gaston County Commissioners and School Board members, beginning on my left.
Kenny Lutes, Gaston County School Board Chairman, Crowder's Mountain Township.
Joe Carpenter, Vice Chair of the County Commissioners, Crowder's Mountain Township.
Kevin Collier, Gaston County Board of Education, represent the Riverbend Township.
Jason Williams, Board Commissioners, Gastonia Township.
Mark Stevens, Gaston County Board of Education, Gastonia Township.
Good evening, Tom Keager, Gastonia Township with the Board of Commissioners.
Good evening, Dorothy Guthrie, Gaston County Board of Education, Gastonia Township.
Kate Ribble, Gaston County Board of Education, Dallas Township.
Okay, Joe. I'll mark. I'll leave. I'll have to charge Gaston County Board of Education Chair of the Towns.
Chris Allen, Gaston County Board of Education, at large.
Chad Brown, Board of Commissioners, Riverbend Township.
Good evening, Mickey Price, South Point Township, Board of Commissioners.
Good evening, Jeff Ramsey, Vice Chairman of the Gaston County School Board, at large.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Our first item is opening remarks. We'll begin with Mr. Kenny Lutes, Board Education Chair.
Thank you. Commissioners, far from coming from the Board of Education and myself, it has been an extreme great opportunity to be able to sit down with you, your representative, Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Philbeck, and try to come to some sort of understanding of what we needed. I think also we had to come to an understanding of what the Gaston County Board of Commissioners were trying to accomplish also. I feel like we have made great progress. I think we have tried to give you the data that you have needed to understand what we were trying to accomplish. And from the Board of Education, I just would like to say thank you, and we do appreciate all your help and everything you do for the children of Gaston County.
Thank you, Mr. Lutes. I just echo his sentiments. It's no secret, we've had some tough times. I think with meeting with your Chairman, Vice Chairman, I think it allowed Commissioner Carpenter and I to have a greater understanding of things, and I think we both did. And the purpose of this meeting is to basically let you know of our first two meetings, some ideas that we've thrown back and forth that we think would be beneficial to the School Board, beneficial to the county, more importantly, beneficial to the children and our educators. With that said, I'll move to the second item, which is first meeting information. We met, I don't actually have the date here, but you should have in your packet a press release, that was on July the 11th, 2014. It should be the last press release. It's actually the first, I think it's the last packet. The reason for the first meeting was to basically sit down, talk to each other, find out areas that we could come to agreement and move forward. One of the issues that I brought forward from our Board is that we wanted some assurances that the School Board wanted to work with us, not just litigate. As you see in your packet, the press release shows that the School Board wants to work and talk these things out. And lastly, well, not lastly, but one of the issues that your Chairman brought up was funding. I think at the time, the state hadn't finished their budget, so we were really unclear on exactly what was needed. So what we decided to do is to meet again at a second meeting, and at that meeting, your Chairman and Vice Chairman, along with Mr. Booker, Commissioner Carpenter and I, and Mr. Mathers, would sit down and try to put some proposal together where the School Board said, "This is what we're looking, what we need." The Commission basically puts forth some information of what we need. So that's basically the gist of the first meeting. I thought it went well, I thought both sides were very respectful towards each other. I think it was a good starting point. And at this time, I'll give it to Mr. Lutes for item number three, the second meeting information.
Okay. On the second meeting information, I was charged by the Gaston County Chairperson, Mr. Philbeck. He thought, he was under the understanding of some questions and some concerns that the County Commissioners may have. I think one of the biggest things that the Commissioners or that he asked of me, and I put it in a form of a letter, and I think all the Commissioners got the form of the letter, or they got it in the form of a letter, but it was about the school consolidation or the school closings. And I went through the process, and I went through the process in the letter that you all received, how we went through that, how that we came up and what we determined not to take any action as far as closing any schools. I also clarified what the cost savings was going to be. The cost savings was not $27 million, it was $200,000 to $300,000 per school. So there were some differences, and I think it's some miscommunication between the Boards. I think, you know, we wanted to try to be clear, make it very clear of what we were talking about, and we left the meeting and we were very open to other things. We are never going to say that we're going to, we can't be close-minded, and I think that's something that I think Commissioner Philbeck has tried to grasp, and I've tried to help him grasp, and he has grasped back to me with it. Y'all are willing to, as far as the Commissioners, y'all are willing to work with us. We are willing to work with the Commissioners because we, as a School Board, have one common goal. That is to come up with the best education that we possibly could provide for our children in Gaston County.
Thank you. I'd like to add to that as well, if that'll be okay?
Sure.
Basically, there were two issues that I think was resolved, and I'm speaking to my fellow Commissioners, that I heard over and over. Number one is, can we work together and not litigate? We did a press release, it was a joint press release where we have agreed to do that. The second is the issue of school closings. I don't think it's the Commissioners' stance that we want to go close schools, that's not really our issue. The issue was that you had this Urban Institute that put out a study, and it was really never refuted. So when it came funding time, it was pretty difficult at times for us to increase funding or things of that nature because of that issue. I'd like to thank Chairman Lutes and Vice Chairman Ramsey. They did send a letter, it is also in your packet. Whether you agree with the information or not, I do want to commend them for doing that. Also, I felt that, according to Mr. Lutes, I think they have a, is it an Infrastructure Committee?
Well, it's a spinoff from the Facilities.
Facility.
Cease Committee doing an in-depth study of our facilities.
Right. It's my understanding that each school was going through an evaluation of the structure of the facility, what it takes to keep it going, should it remain open, and things of that nature. It's my understanding, although all the information is not back, that some of those will probably have to be closed. No one really wants to do that, but from what I've heard from Chairman Lutes, that they're going to follow the facts, and I feel comfortable that, once this committee gets all their information together, that the tough decisions that need to be made, I feel comfortable that the School Board is willing to do those. What we agreed to do is to basically go back and see if there were additional funding opportunities from the county. And this is basically how I did that. I talked to our County Manager, Earl Mathers. I charged him with going back, looking at the budget, not really talked to anybody, really don't get any opinions, just go back, look at the budget without any influence, and come back and tell us what you can do. And that he did, which will lead us to our next item, the county's proposal to the School Board. The proposal that we worked out, Commissioner Carpenter, myself, and Earl, is simply this. The school has requested that we transfer a million that is in the capital side, is currently 2.2, a million back out of capital to operations, and that we give them an additional million of one-time funding. Earl came back and said that we can do that. We can basically do a million dollars from lab salaries, if I'm correct, and that we can transfer the funds. What I think the Board gets out of that is, I think we have some pretty good assurances that each facility's going to be looked at, it's going to be efficient, and that the School Board is going to work with us to help make sure that we do what we can to have the best educational experience in Gaston County, but when it comes time to make some of the tough decisions, it may be closing a school or something of that nature, they've agreed to do that. At this time, our next item is the School Board's proposal to the county.
Well, I think the School Board's proposal to the county is to be diligent and to look at these things that Tracy has just talked about. I'm going to echo some of the things that he says. We are not going to completely rule out any kind of school consolidation, but we also want you to know that if we decide to do some sort of school consolidation right now, it would not happen for another year and a half, actually, two school years, because it takes, it has to be, decisions got to be made before the end of this year to get kids ready for next year. So, you know, it's a lengthy process. It's not something like you can go over there and cut the lights off, and you're going to start saving money right there. It takes, it's a lengthy process. We also want to echo, and we wanted to say thank you, because we really appreciate the additional funding, the $8.5 million that we did get. We have made great strides this summer. We have done tons with technology. We have touched every school in Gaston County school system with technology. And I think one of the biggest things that my Board is really excited about, and we are very excited about it, is we're getting some talk from the County Commissioners. You have bond debt that's going to be retired, and you're going to be able to move some money to improving of the school system and the facilities. And y'all have basically explained that to us, so we can look, not next year, but we're looking like five years down the road, four years down the road, because we do have some aging facilities. And some of our aging facilities, it's not feasible to spend the money, capital money on them, because you still got an aging facility after you do that. So what I think this all has, I think a lot of goodwill has came between the two Boards. I think, I think we have learned to trust each other to a point, and I think it's wonderful. And I think we've saved money, we've transferred some of our services over to the hospital is a great partner. They have helped us, they have taken responsibility of a lot of things. We have saved money that way. We have digitally eyesed all of our records. All of our records are digital now, so we have cut down on the number of personnel that it takes to run that department. You know, as well as I do, when you can push a button, instead of flip through papers or go through file cabinets, it takes a lot less people. So we're always looking at cost-saving measures, and we don't want you to ever think that we're, that we never stop. We always, we have, we have programs right now where we're changing light bulbs, we're doing all kinds of things like that, and that's cutting down on the overall utilities for the entire school system. What we wanted you to understand was, the operating costs are rising. And I think when we started, there was not a definite budget, but when the state says, "We're only going to pay you a partial amount of diesel fuel cost," somebody's, or we've got to come up with the rest of it, we don't, that's not an option. We don't, we can't decide if we want to pay for diesel fuel, we have to pay it. So that's why we asked, that's why we asked for the increase in the operating, because we had a lot of things, a lot of issues, and we didn't have a set budget at the time. But I think there is a great deal of goodwill between the two Boards, and we do thank you as a Board of Education, we do thank all the Commissioners.
If I had a couple things?
You can go right ahead.
If you look in your packet, there is another press release, it says August 6, 2014. You should have all received a copy of that. So you should have the first press release where we met, the second press release, and then for the Commissioners, you should have a letter, which we've asked for and they've sent, giving their perspective on the school closings. Also, from what I gathered from the meeting as well, when you look at some of these schools that may have to be closed, from my understanding, and you look at our bond, some of the bond debt that we have that we may need to release, is as they may close a school or two, they may have to go to another school, fix it up, get it ready, and things of that nature. So it's not something you can do overnight. And I think, I think you made that more clear during the meetings, and I didn't think it could be done overnight, but there's a lot more that goes into it in affecting communities and things of that nature that I think was pretty eye-opening. I know that's probably not a lot, but you all should have gotten the press releases, you should have gotten the letter. That's basically the gist of meeting. It's our hope that both Boards will ask questions. Feel free to ask questions of Mr. Ramsey, Carpenter, Lutes, myself, Earl is here, Jeff Booker is here. If you have any questions on how you think this will work, any of the agreement, any of the proposal, that's, I think now's a good time to ask those questions. So our next item is questions from the Commission, if you have any questions. Commissioner Price.
This report is supposed to be working on, how soon will it be available or done?
I will let Mr. Collier, as the Chairman of that Committee, and I will let him respond to that.
We've hired an architectural firm to, and they're already at work, but we're hopeful they're going to be finished in November with a report for all the schools. We've engaged them to bring us reports on 13 schools. And the 13 schools actually touch every township, about two townships, two schools in each township, three in Gastonia. And they're our oldest schools by design, is the way we chose to go after this with the first 13.
And then, once that's available, what's the next step?
Well, we'll get together, put the data together, and we'll make a recommendation to our Board once we have all the data together from the architects.
Would that be in December?
We're hopeful that it'll be by December.
Okay. Any other questions from the Commission? Commissioner Keager?
Not a question, just more an observation. And I know it's a, you know, it gives a sigh of relief from some to realize that we will have the amounts of retired debt from buildings that we did 20 years ago, the DSS complex, the jail, the jail annex, the courthouse, so on and so on. But with that retirement, just, you know, be sure to keep in mind that that's not going to be all available for the schools. Those same complexes I mentioned, their warranties are out now, you know how equipment goes after 20 years, we're going to need some of that for our own projects also. So I just want everybody to, you know, have the realization that 100% of our debt retirement can't all go to the schools. There's a lot of other things throughout the county that'll have to be dealt with there.
Any other questions from the Commission? Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to applaud you guys for taking the step and having the meeting and, you know, coming to some sort of agreement that, you know, I'll support. I think it's great of you guys to put this together. I would just encourage you, and Kevin, I appreciate what you guys are doing in chairing that Committee, I would just encourage you to really, you know, expand what we're doing. I think that our, the County Commission is certainly open to funding new ideas and funding education, and really making sure that money gets to the classroom and to the student. You know, we just wanted the reassurance that you guys are really willing to make decisions and be innovative and go do something. And I really believe that you guys are heading in that direction. I appreciate, you know, Chairman Lutes and the remarks you just made. So if anything, I should encourage you to continue what you're doing, and thank you for what you've done, and hopefully we can really make an impact for the students and give them some better facilities. You know, I was at the TNO Conference a couple weeks ago, and, you know, just heard some of the teachers talking about some of their facilities. And, you know, many of them were talking about how, you know, they wanted better facilities for their, for their students. But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, teachers want good facilities too, you know, you want to be able to have pride in where you're working, you want to be able to know when you're going in your, your school, that it's a nice place to teach. You know, we all want that for our occupation. So I think we owe that to them, we owe it to our students. And also, I want to commend you guys and this County Commission for coming together on the teacher supplement, the 3% this year. I know you guys just addressed that in your reading before this, and, you know, it's not a huge amount of money, but I think it's symbolic, and it shows that we haven't forgotten, you know, the teachers, and we do recognize that we want to continue to bring them up. And I think it was a good gesture by both our Boards to come together and do that. So appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think my question is more along lines I asked at the budget meeting. What monies have we spent or budgeted, was that accounted for in the, when the Urban Institute did it, was on the schools that are basically in need of repair the most? I would say, I always use two schools, but I'm not going to use any, but I'm just thinking, we have schools that are going to need to either be replaced entirely, or are we taking the money that we're going to start putting in for the 8.5? I know it's distributed throughout, but how are we looking down the road? Because I keep hearing the thing about the bond money and some things about that. I would like to know where we stand, how much money has been spent compared to how much money is budgeted in future for those schools that basically, you know, we have some schools that are in dire need of some more repairs, and for me, as a Commissioner, to vote on something, to give the bond money just for repair money, so to speak, I got to look down the road and say, "Hey, we have some schools that may end up needing to be totally replaced in its existence." So that's just some of the questions that I've been filtering around and trying to figure out. So that's not a, I know it's a study you guys have maybe, and I know Jeff's done a lot of extensive work on it, so I guess what I'm asking is, we know, I think you'd said, Mr. Booker, it was some time back, we actually needed a new school to replace some of those. So I would like to not, I know we can't give a definite answer, I'd like to know what we're looking at as far as, you know, our plan for the five, 10, 15-year future, because the bond money will be coming susceptible here real soon, in the next couple of years. So I'm just trying to grasp a little bit of that. I hope, I'm sure you guys are on top of that. I know the architect's probably doing a lot. But I want to know where the money we've spent and what we've budgeted since the last Urban Institute on those schools that probably need to be addressed at a different level.
Can I, can I come in? I think, thank Mr. Brown, I think what you're asking, and if I didn't hit all the highlights, you feel free to redirect me in any way. We had bond money from previous, we've had bond money set aside for all three schools that we're talking about that were on the slate to close. Okay? We had improvements, you know, designed to go do that. We, as a Board, we felt like it was not good business sense to put a lot of money in a school that may not be open in three years, or it could be open in three years. So we didn't do that. Have we had expenses there? Yes, we have. When a sewer line breaks and it doesn't work any longer, you've got to spend $50,000 to put it in. You don't have a choice. But doing the major repairs, we had a couple schools that were designated to add eight unit, eight unit additions on. Why would we add eight, you know, we looked at that, was like, "We're not going to add eight units to that school because we don't have enough kids there." We did, we did charge our staff to try to utilize these schools, and we went back, and I think you've got that in your letter, we did try to utilize them, and we have utilized them because the occupancies of those schools are the, the seats are being more used today than they were. But no, sir, we have tried not to spend excessive money on the schools that we knew were in dire need of repair.
And I apologize, I guess I didn't state that very clearly. What I'm talking about is the schools that are, I was making, Stanley Middle, Belmont Middle, those are the oldest, some of the oldest schools we have.
Yes, sir.
And if we're pumping money into them, and basically, they need to be retrofitted to a new school.
Yes, sir.
Our bond money that, you know, we want to release or try to put out there, what's left over from the original, the 2008 bond referendum, I'd rather see that go to some of those schools that we had put back in line to get new schools, even though it's an existing school, but just it's a new facility itself and infrastructure. So that's, I guess that's what I'm trying to find out, is how much money we've spent in maybe our five worst schools, and I'm not saying that's a worthy task, because everybody can say their school is the worst. I'm just saying, those are the two that I've visited time and time again with Mr. Booker and our time going around. So I guess my question is, if we've spent $15 million in Stanley Middle, so to speak, and all of a sudden, we're still getting the same result, and we're still having to pump money in there, at what point does it look like, you know, it may be feasible for us to build a new facility just to overcome what we're putting in there? And I guess that's, anyway, in a study, or just something you guys may have. It's not anything tonight you have to answer, I'm just trying to find out for future, because that bond money that we have is sitting there, and it's ticking for us.
I'll let Mr. Lutes answer, if you'd like. What, when we met, we actually talked about these things. What I felt comfortable about the meeting is, everything's on the table. Everything. And I think you see the heads shake on the School Board side, whether it's Belmont Middle, Stanley Middle, whatever, everything's on the table to do what needs to be done. You may have to close Belmont Middle, that maybe something needs to be done, Stanley as well. So the assurances that I have is that, once this Committee is through, there's going to be some decisions made, and hopefully by December, I think the Commission will be able to look and see a path forward as far as schools that may need to be closed, or schools that may need to be closed and combined or rebuilt, and things of that nature. If you want to add to that.
The only thing that I would really like to add is, Mr. Brown, is I think our Facilities Department has known, does know the schools that are in dire need. I think we've been, tried to be very smart about not putting a lot of capital dollars in those schools with the present of actually doing something different. You know, we don't want to spend a million dollars if you know you're not going to accomplish anything. If you have an issue, yes, sir, you've got to spend $40,000 or $50,000 to correct a health issue or something, you have to do that. There, again, that's just like the sewer line. Now, we do have some older schools, and I think Mr. Collier's reports, we're going to tell a lot in December, January, whenever we get them. You know, there's all kinds of things, there's all kinds of things to look at. Stanley Middle has, may have enough property to actually build another school beside the school, and then tear down the school. Belmont Middle, you know, you don't have anywhere to park to let the kids out in the mornings. So, you know, there's different animals, you have to deal with them different ways, but I think when Mr. Collier gets all the reports back, I think the Commissioners will be very satisfied in what you, what you see. It may not be what you want to see, I mean, you know, with the aging facilities, but we'll try to give you a very true picture.
I just want, so I can make an educated decision on where that money is spent and at the time it needs to be spent, that's all I really want.
I also think, now, the money you're talking about, are you talking about the future money, the 55... the 55 million dollars? Well, see, that's something that I see, and I think Commissioner Philbeck and I both look at, that's something that we're looking at four or five years down the road. We're not, we're not, we're not asking you to vote on that today, or tomorrow, or next week, or next year, because we know it's going to take a little process to do some design and all that kind of stuff. It takes a while to get anything started.
So basically, what you'd add, if I'm for a facilities committee, would come out and make their recommendations, and the school board would have to vote, okay, this is where we're going, this is for teaching plans, this is how we're going to do, and then you're going to have to do the studies, maybe some lands you have to get, there's a lot into it. Good news that I think the commission can take away is, by December or January, you will be able to know firsthand where we're going, what needs to be done, whether it's Belmont Middle, whether it's Stanley, or some of these other schools. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So Commissioner Price.
Well, kind of kicking back on what Mr. Brown said, the bond package, we either have to release the bonds by November 2017, or they go away. We've asked for an extension, got it three years. So if we're going to use that money, we've got to get a thought process or something after report in the pipeline to know what, if and when we need to release. Of course, there'll be a debt payback, but I think the thought process that I'm hearing is, you know, the citizens approved it, you know, it was for basically new schools, but, and we still may get new schools out, I guess the report will tell us, but can, I don't know if anybody can speak to this issue, is that while I was on vacation, I got a text that said, "South Point High School is going to be the new middle school." Where that came from, I don't know. And the person wanted me to comment on that. And I, you know, I basically told him, I said, "That's the first time I've heard that news." So I think if we could get something out, this rumor mill, especially in Belmont, would maybe subside or what, but it seems like every week there's a new scenario out there of what.
In our meetings, that was never brought up, I would assume that's probably just a rumor. But as far as the bond debt, if I'm not someone to speak up.
It's not brought up, not brought up.
It's not brought up there, but neither. Again, hopefully by December, January, let's say, January 2015 at the latest, they come out, this is what needs to be done, probably, Jeff, if I'm wrong, tell me, it'll probably take six to nine months, maybe a year to get everything together, studies, things of that nature. In the meantime, Earl, you can tell me if I'm wrong, what we can do is, if it came against the crunch time and as far as 17, we could release the bonds and just hold them and stagger them out or things of that nature if we need. Am I correct on that?
Yes, that is correct. And, you know, there may be some interest rate pressure that is going to occur in the not-too-distant future, so it might behoove us to move forward with the release of those bond funds sooner rather than later. Inflation is likely to remain tame for the next year or so, but then it could start creeping up.
Does the committee have permitted growth? I mean, is that taken in as an aspect of what they're going to be, not your committee, the one that's reporting in November?
No. The Urban Institute used all that information, permitted growth, they had a very complex matrix that they applied to the, how many children are in a certain price home. But the architects are just doing assessment of our facilities and what it takes to bring those buildings up to a 20th century building. And the cost, and I think we all can agree that some of those facilities, we're going to say it's going to be cheaper to knock them down than it is to try to bring those buildings up to a 20th century building. And that's, that's the charge that these architects are really doing, is assessment of our current facilities. They're not doing what the Urban Institute does and look at growth and try to project growth and where schools should be located. We're just, this firm is just doing assessments of our current facilities.
Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I made my comments, but I didn't ask the question. I remember the original request for funding. Some of that has been met by the state's budget, it came back, I guess, a little bit better than what we feared. What's the plan for the $2 million?
I would, Mr. Booker, really, if Chairman Lutz would be okay, explained it very well to me, if you would do the honors.
Sure. Commissioner Williams, $2 million, it's like one big old metric we operated on in previous years, we would be at a baseline there. The additional million basically covers our inflation costs that we have projected based on retirement cost increases, utility cost increases, et cetera. So it keeps us in a revenue-neutral position. To the state budget, at this point, we estimate that the state production is somewhere between 1.4 and 1.8 million dollars of less funds that we have. That's why the fact that you all are allowing us to have this $2 million is helping to offset the position that we have there, because you've probably seen in the headlines right now, there's a debate between the House and the Senate about how teacher assistant funding is being done with the trading of positions. And we were one of those districts that had a significant amount of trading between the teacher assistant line item and the teacher line item. And this little technical corrections being talked about, instead of using the minimum salary, to use the average salary, that's worth, right at $680,000 to our district. And that's part of that number, it's a layout, it could be 1.4 to 1.8, because we're looking for that interpretation. So to direct to you, that $2 million will basically keep us whole to operate on where we were last year.
So if that's the case, if we're just talking about, this is nothing but inflationary money, it's not going for anything, it's one-time? I don't know how we, as a board, can say this is one-time money. If all we're doing is keeping them where they're at, I don't know how we can say, we'll give it to you this year, but not next year.
Well, I think the proposal that we put forth and talked with Earl is, we only have so much money. And they understand that. So basically, what you have is, they have a hole, we have enough money this year to fill that hole next year. It's going to be up to, see what the state does again, but next year, we may not have the money to fill that hole. So we're basically just taking it, we're eating the elephant one bite at a time. And when we talk to Mr. Lutz, Mr. Ramsey, and Mr. Booker, they understand that this is one-time. So we're going to try to meet the need that we have today, live the fight another day, look at the budget next year from the state, hopefully, we'll be in a better position in the county. And hopefully, by that time, we build enough trust and respect, mutual respect, that we'll be able to go and say, you know what, this is what we have, we can't help in this situation, or no, and we both agree that, okay, we've done all that we can do. So that's, I actually agree with you, this doesn't really fix any long-term problem. But I think it's a big deal with an hour budget a year that we didn't raise taxes to go back in our budget, find a million dollars to give to the schools, and then again, move it from capital to operation. Does it solve everything? No. Does it help the immediate need and solve the immediate need? Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Any other questions from the commission?
I just have one follow.
Okay, Commissioner Brown.
On our contract employees that we have, does that come out of the state's budget or the Gasson County portion of our budget, the money that we would be given? If we were using as inflation-type of things, is the contract employees that we have, their principals, security, whatever, maybe, our contract, does that come out of our budget? That our money that, I know it's all one budget once it gets there, but is it deemed we're paying for the employees as part of that, or the state pays for those?
I'll refer to Mr. Brown. It's real complicated, I'm going to tell you.
Commissioner Brown, I wish that was a one-sentence answer. Our principals, my salary, we are allotted a certain amount by the state. And that is just a harsh portion of what each person is compensated, because that's done on an average across the state. From a competitive basis, we need to pay more than that. So part of our funding for a lot of our employees is that's where the local supplement comes in as well. So you're on that. When you start using the word "contract employees," we have in our exceptional children department, a numerous number of people who are contract employees, because their rate of compensation is at such a level, we can't afford, but have a portion of them under contract basis, and they work through a lot of times third parties. So that's a very broad question.
I guess I was going to, like, the retirees type of thing that are coming back and see how that, say, portion?
Yes, sir. When you've got the local supplement, you have to pay the retirement benefit on that part, because the state is paying it on the state's part. So that's what we typically talk about that. Also, I would say that one thing our board has elected to do, most of my colleagues are going back to their commissioners, saying, okay, the state gave a 7% average raise, it's really less than five, to teachers, and they're going back asking for additional local money to help offset that cost. The way our supplement works, we're not coming back to you for that, because we have already been talking in good faith about what we would do with the money. So that's why you haven't seen us in the paper saying, we're getting hit again.
Answer your question, Commissioner Brown? Any other questions from the commission? And Mr. Lutz?
Yes, sir.
All right, the school board members, do you have any questions? Mr. Collier?
Well, I want to echo Mr. Williams a little bit, thank you, guys, leadership vote boards for coming together and finding some middle ground. And I want to thank the county commission for the additional funding. You don't know how much that means to our school system to come up with that money for us. And I know it's just one year and a budget, but I want to thank the county commissioners just personally, Kevin Collier's aboard me right now. Just can't tell you how much I appreciate what you've done. The one question I have going forward, and I don't, I want to know if y'all talked about this in your meetings, is the supplement steps for Gasson County. We got a 1%, I mean, we got a 3% increase, and we got a lot of thanks from staff members and everybody thanking you guys and thanking us for that increase this year. Did you guys talk and discuss about our ongoing plan for future years to try to get that amount up to the state average, is where our goal is to try to get to as a school board? And I know we're trying to go from one budget to the next each year, but did you have any discussions about trying to put something in place to get there?
That was not part of our discussion. I think what we're, really, I think when we sat down, we looked at, okay, we have this amount of money, we're mandated to fix these schools, we would like to do supplements, we'd like to give it up to the average. To be honest, we'd like to give as much as we could to get the best teachers here. At the same time, I think we kept it about, hey, we know you only have this amount of money, we know what we're mandated to do. What I hope to do, and Chairman Lutz can chime in as well, is I think it was good that we sat down and talked. It was really good. I think it was very, very informative for both sides. What, how I think we addressed that issue and issues going forward, considering you have tight budgets, is for us to get together more often, I think, not just when there's an issue and we're mad at each other, but see how innovative we can be. I think this meeting proved that point. If you look back just a month ago, there were talks from the school board or meetings, and there may be a lawsuit, you've got the commission know, we're going to move funding from this area to that area. Because we just sit down and talk with each other, we found additional dollars, we were able to work together. So really, I think those challenges can be met if we'll sit down and work together, not just once a year during a budget. Mr. Lutz?
I echo what Mr. Philbeck says, I think it's going to take more dialogue between the two boards on a much more scheduled, I guess, maybe not scheduled, but I think we need to do it a lot more frequently. I think, you know, it's kind of hard on one hand, if you don't know what a state's budget is, I can't tell you what I need. You know? So I have to tell you what I need all in two weeks after they come up with the state budget. But I think we possibly, I think, you know, having comments and having dialogue in the months prior to a budget, I think that would help on both sides to lay some things out on the line, so the commissioners weren't be blindsided and not have any idea about what we were looking at and what we needed. So I think that's something that we need to look forward in the future.
And I think maybe you can take this issue, maybe get two or three issues, have another meeting in a couple of months, while we're not under pressure, you know, and maybe begin to work on those issues and see how we can be innovative and things of that nature. I think that would help solve these issues. The problem is, we're not talking. Historically, we're not, we're not meeting. And I know everybody sitting around this table cares about education and cares about Gasson County, or you wouldn't run, because you don't get paid enough, and you can't make everybody happy. So I think, I think what we could do is sit down, meet, maybe have an agenda on some of these issues, just like you would in our private businesses. When we have an issue, it's immediate head-on and try to solve it. And then come budget time, we can have some solutions rather, hey, here's an issue.
I'd like to echo one thing. I think, Mr. Price, I think what we probably need to do as two boards, I think we probably need to come together in December, I mean, January maybe, and we could give you a little better idea of what facilities are bad, which ones, what kind of monetary monies need to be spent on these facilities. And I think that would be a good time for you to look at it as a board, and y'all would have the information. So, you know, I think that's, that's a step that we need to take, something like that.
I just have one more.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to point out that all the facilities committee of the subcommittee of the board, the members are Mr. Howell, Mr. Upchurch, and Mr. Stevens. And commissioners, I want you to know that we have talked about moving as quickly as we can. We'd rather get this done sooner than later. And we have, we've agreed to try to move as quickly as we can, but we're having to wait on the architects, but we will make sure they do a good thorough job of repaying them, in my opinion, handsomely, and we want a good product when they get there.
Howell?
First of all, I would say, Mr. Philbeck, Chairman Lutz, county commission, my board, there have been many marriages, many politicians, many businesses that fell for lack of communication. And so I appreciate the process of starting the communication. I've gone back and studied Roman history, Greek history, great empires were built thinking outside the box, and they died because they stayed inside of that box. And so I want to challenge these two boards to, as we press forward, to come outside of that box. Coming outside of that box, part of that means that as elected officials, sometimes we're accused of living vote-to-vote-to-vote-to-vote, one election to another. And in that, moving one election to the another, we try to see what's going to garner more votes versus what is the right thing to do. And I think in this situation, we need to do what's the right thing. So for example, with me running for a different township this time, instead of an at-large, some would say that township needs new schools. I think the right thing is to fix the ones that we have before we build a new one. That's an example of what I mean by doing the right thing, instead of the popular thing that might win you an election. Also, I would say that I'll be on record tonight, that if the right thing needs to be decided tomorrow, I'll decide the right thing tomorrow, not November the 5th, or November the 6th, or the next cycle. And I would hope that these two boards would be willing to do the same thing, that the right thing's the right thing. Because as we talked about, there are facilities that are aging that we have to decide, are we going to replace six air conditioning units or not? But at the same time, when we're trying to decide that, kids are sitting in those classrooms. It could be your kids, it could be my kids, it could be another citizen of Gasson County's kids, but they're kids. And so I would just say, as we continue to communicate, which I applaud you guys on getting started, this right here has been the most, second-most productive meeting I've had since being on the Gasson County Board of Education. And so I appreciate the opportunity to be able to sit down to hear Commissioner Price talk, to hear Commissioner Brown talk about what he's talking about, and thus us be able to share our hearts. Communication is key. I don't know that we need to wait till January before we sit down again, because this builds dialogue, this builds trust. But also think we've got to remember that we've got to come outside of that box, and we can't wait election cycle to election cycle before we make hard decisions. And... And those won't be popular most of the time. If you have to give us more money, that's not gonna be popular. If we have to close a school, that's not gonna be popular. But we gotta do the right thing because it's the right thing. I appreciate what you're doing and I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of it.
Yes, Ms. Guthrie.
Commissioner Philbeck, your committee, Mr. Lutz, board chair, and your committee, county commissioners, and my colleagues, there is a saying, "And the walls have come tumbling down." Information is powerful. And this evening, I feel like that wall has tumbled because we are here this evening. We're discussing some things that I have had concerns with for a very long time. We are here together to eradicate things that don't even exist, some of which are propaganda and some folk just made up. You know what you want to see happen in Gaston County. You know that you want the very best for the children here in our schools. We know that we advocate and what we want for Gaston County. And together, we have discussed those concerns this evening. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart because we are looking at a digital age very soon, and we've got to equip our schools for such. We do not want to be in the bottom tier of districts that are not supporting the education and the resources that are needed in order to move our children forward and to become one of the top 10 schools, districts in North Carolina. It's appalling for me as an educator in South Carolina when I hear and see more of our wonderful teachers getting employment there. I want us best for our county because that's where I am, and I retired from Gaston County Schools. And I want you to know that we trust, we really trust the facilities committee to bring back the very best recommendations, the most feasible and practical ways for us to look at the future of our schools in Gaston County. And I want to thank you. We, I learned something tonight, which I wanted to believe a long time ago. The county commissioners and the school board are two very important agencies here in Gaston County. We can graduate our children, we can lower the dropout rate, we can cut homelessness, we can do all those things if we work together for the common good. And we have done that tonight, and I want to thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Stevens?
Mine, I've just got a comment. First of all, I want to, I want to thank both, the leadership of both boards for getting together. I think that's great that you've done that. I hope it continues. I really think it needs to be on a regular basis. I know everybody's busy, we don't need to add an extra two or three meetings a month, but you know, once a quarter, once every six months, I think will be good just to discuss, you know, what's going on with the school system, with the county, and how we can work together. I think that's good. I want to kind of address the facilities committee and kind of where we're, to answer Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Price's questions. We were actually commissioned to look at all 56 school sites. And what we decided after hearing how long that was gonna take to wait on those assessments of all of them, we decided that wouldn't work. And so while we are ultimately, Mr. Lutz mentioned that we're gonna look at all of them, we're ultimately gonna look at all of them, we started with 13 that we think are the worst or the oldest because we knew that it wasn't fair to the public, to the school board, to the county commissioners, for us to sit back and wait on all 56 assessments to be done. It was just entirely too long. And so we picked these 13, we're gonna see what the results are. That doesn't mean we're done by any means. We're gonna continue until we're all, all the facilities have been assessed, but we're gonna take these first 13 and try to make a decision based on that.
Ms. Gribble?
Good question. And thanks, I'll say ditto to all the other praise that everybody has laid out on the table, this opportunity to come together. But I wanted to ask you a question. All of us agree, we've got some schools that probably can't be salvaged. We've got problems in a lot of the schools that are gonna cost so much to fix that there's just no fixing them. But while we're talking about that, I want to maybe clarify a rumor that I heard in a workforce development board meeting the other day. It was announced in this meeting that you commissioners have instructed the school board that the next building we are to build is to be a technical, tech ed high school. And, you know, we're not talking about high schools around this table, we're talking about everything but that. So I didn't question the rumor, I didn't say anything else about it, but is there any discussion being had about needing to build another high school and for it to be a tech ed high school?
I don't know official conversations or meetings about that. I do think, when you go to a lot of chamber functions and things of that nature, I do hear a lot of folks talk about vocational schools, and I'm very supportive of that, but I haven't, first of all, we can't direct the school board on which school to build, you're elected to do that. And I think hopefully what comes out of this meeting for the public to see is the commission's job is to fund, and we are a watchdog, if you will, over the taxpayer dollars. So when we give them, we need to ask questions. Where's this money going? How's this gonna be spent? At the end of the day, where your dollars are spent, what schools are built, whether it's a tech school, vocational school, high school, or middle school, the school board's elected to make those decisions, not the county commission. And so hopefully we can dispel some of that. I would like to see a vocational school eventually, but I think we all would.
I think kids want some middle school first.
Right. Make that sound a little bit. Okay. Next steps. At the next, well, let me do this first. I want to personally thank Commissioner Carpenter, he's been quiet all night.
He said it all.
He said I said it all.
I would, I would like to say that, oh, we have.
Open the door.
Well, you know, I appreciate both boards coming together and using some good logic discussion about what we need to do for education. I don't want to lose sight of the fact that since '08, we've had a crisis in the economy in this nation and probably going back several years more in Gaston County, the loss of our major industry, our largest part of the textile industry. So we've had a tough job of trying to make things work out. But that crisis and all, it's really forcing us to look at how we spend our money and provide the services that we need in the county. And I, I think we've come to a good point here. I don't think we're ready to sing kumbaya, but maybe we can sing, "Shall we gather at the river?"
At the river.
So it's, it's good. I look forward to working with both boards and see how we can make things work out. And I've heard it from the business community, they want to be a part of making this community not just a good education system, but a top education system for the students and the families in our community. Thank you.
Well, and I just wanted, I wanted to let you know, I really appreciate Commissioner Carpenter. He's been on the commission a long time, very forward-thinking, and was very helpful in a lot of these meetings. I don't think he gets enough credit for that. Commissioner Price?
Thank you again. Just thank you for everybody coming tonight and listening. I want to reiterate that while we look at aging facilities wherever they are, the South Point Township is experiencing growth. And I, you know, I wish the whole county was, it'd probably foolish to say was experienced because then we'd have our hands full, but I hate to say it, but if you, if you come through Belmont at school time, you might as well be planning on sitting in a few stoplights and waiting to make some turns. It's really getting, and I'm tickled to death that people want to live in South Point Township, but it's getting to the point now where I, every, where I go to eat or running, walk in the public, Mickey, are we getting a new musical? Mickey, are we getting a new musical? And I don't know what to tell people other than now I can say there's a report coming out in November. Hopefully, we're getting some. But I cannot tell you how much, how many compliments I've had on Stuart Kramer. So for every both boards, that has been a well-received addition to the facilities and most people are jealous that don't have one, but, you know, they want one anyway and appreciative that we've got one in the county. So just, I hope this report, it comes out, comes out quick and you guys make a decision in Gribble.
Mr. Ramsey?
I just want to interrate what was spoken here tonight, and I want to thank these two gentlemen beside me on my left for their leadership. It shows our county that we had a disagreement, but now we can come together and solve a lot of problems. This is one of the proudest moments in Gaston County as elected official, to see these two boards working together. We are the future of Gaston County. As Joe's mentioning, over the last 10 years, textile industry's left Gaston County. It's our charge for the future of Gaston County is transform Gaston County where we can track new businesses and new jobs and new people come to Gaston County. So I, it was honored to work on this committee and look forward, meet with y'all more often. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Next steps, Commissioner Carpenter and I, and any other commissioner that would like to sponsor, at our next commissioner meeting, our actual board meeting, voting meeting, we'll have on the agenda to vote to transfer the funds and allocate a million dollars from lab salaries. So that, that will be on the agenda. I have written down, I will get in touch with your chairman, I do think we need to meet more regularly, and I think we need to have some type of agenda. Just a couple ideas that maybe we can work on. A couple things that I think we can immediately begin to work on is resolutions. Resolutions hold a lot of power, in my opinion. I think when you have the full county commission and the full school, school board get behind resolutions, whether it's a state level or federal level, I think maybe if we work together a little bit more when we have issues, for example, the budget. Y'all are, y'all are coming to us with, we need this amount of money, when you really don't even know what you need because your budget hadn't even been approved. So we're trying to give you amount of money that you don't even know if you need, and you may realize at the end you need even more. So, you know, maybe we can work together to get, you know, where you don't even have to bring forth any budget till the states actually finished with their budget. To me, it makes no sense why that happens the way it happens. We also have Ms. Debbie Clary, who works on behalf of the county, that I would have no problem, you know, with, if there's a school issue, that she could work with you on in Raleigh. She was a senator, a lot of experience. She's there that I think you can use. So I think resolution is something we could work on, and we do have lobbyists and things of that nature that, I know it's a bad word, but it's very complicated. You can't be everywhere at all times. You need somebody to kind of help you see your way through the system that, that you can use. With that said, it's my desire, and I think it's the commission's, to hopefully have a top 10 school system. I've heard that from the chamber. If you look at the priorities that the commission passed, education's key. We realize that. So don't, don't, don't think if we don't have enough dollars to give you at a certain time that we don't care about education. And I think for us, we need to understand that there's more to some decisions at times than what we read in the paper. So I think we can work together, you know, on those issues. But I'm committed, as long as I'm county commissioner, and I think other board members are, thinking outside the box, being innovative, being efficient, meeting together, moving forward. I hope when we're done, when we're all finished, that we can look back and say, we really made a difference in Gaston County. The only way that's gonna happen, we've gotta put politics to the side, personal agendas and opinions to the side, and just work together. And I hope the public sees that. That's, that's what we're doing today. And I do want to make one observation. Is there anybody here from the Gazette? The Gazette twice has made us look bad, both boards. I'm gonna say this publicly, because they were not invited when we met leadership. You know why they wanted to come? To make a story, make a headline, and not help in any way, shape, or form. We're finally here together, it's a public meeting, working together, and they're not here. So I just wanted to call that out.
As we continue to look at the future and how we're going to strengthen our communication between the boards, as we develop long-range plans for Gaston County schools and your plans, what about a one-day retreat where we could more or less get together and talk about the things that our principals have suggested that they would like to see for the new year? And of course, you know what you have and what you are contemplating giving us. So why don't we just have like a little retreat maybe once a year?
Again, I'll contact your chairman. I think communication's the key. The more we can meet, the more we can sit down, I think we're all for that. And I heard it said, you shouldn't get in an argument with a man that buys ink by the barrel. But we need good news in this community.
That's right.
And we need things like this reported, not just a headline that we can't agree. So I hope we'll all contact the Gazette and ask them why they didn't come. With that said, this concludes our joint work session for tonight. Our next regular meeting is August 26th at 6:00 PM at the Harley B. Gaston Jr. Public Forum Courthouse. If you have questions or comments, you can please contact our clerk, Donna S. Buff, at 704-866-3196 in Chertown. I'd like to thank Marcella and Angela and our IT staff and anyone from the school system who helped put this together, the Shields Museum for allowing us to be here. With that said, meeting is adjourned. Good night.
Great job.